I can barely see the clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Hakonia Planning Board to order. Could we have the, uh, call the roll, please? Oh. We need you.
Hey, Fred, just in the nick of time.
I, I called it too quick.
Remember. If you're not last minute, you're way too early.
No, I'm gonna wait for the city councilor to sit and then we'll start, we'll call with him in honor of his punctuality. Good evening, Mr. Bowns.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, so David Bowns?
Here.
Mike Delavecchia?
Here.
Brett Bellabo?
Here.
And Sarah Jenna?
Here.
And Peter Burnett?
Here. And, uh, in attendance tonight, Rob Mora and Tony Graham, our excellent planning staff. Um, let's see. Uh, could I have a motion to accept the minutes, I know we don't need to do one, from the December 3rd meeting, there was no January meeting? Anyone?
I will make the motion to accept the minutes of December 3rd, as Fred.
Okay, ten second.
I second that.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Or raise their hand, raise their hand. Uh, opposed, and the motion carries. All right. We have some presentations to start matters off here, if I'm reading my agenda correctly. Oh, uh, just an announcement to any members of the public that might be here for an item number 10, uh, 10.1, which is the Barton's Hotel property, uh, proposal. That is up tonight for what's called acceptance, there won't be a public hearing. But if it's accepted by the board, there will be a public hearing scheduled most likely at the next meeting, so if anybody's here, uh, wanting to speak on that application, I just wanted to give you a heads up, uh, there won't be any opportunity to do that tonight. All right, uh, the first item is, let me see here, it's in, um, amendments to the permitted use table, uh, and updates to chapter 89. Take it away, Rob. Oh, and, uh, just to let the record show that Mr. Bellabo is seated as a, uh, full member tonight, he is an alternate, and Ms. Jenna is, uh, serving her first meeting as a full member of the board. Mr. Mora.
So, good evening, Plaid Ward. So, in discussion with the city council, when they adopted the short-term rental ordinance, they wanted to create a special exception for short-term rentals. So with that, um, we were forced to redo the permitted of, permitted uses chart, um, to not only add in where it was gonna be permitted, which was already defined when they wrote the ordinance for short-term rentals, and where it was not, or where it was not permitted, but then to add in the areas where they wanted to allow it by special exception. So, we have added short-term lodging to the table of permitted uses, and made it a special exception under the RR1, RR2, RS, RG, RA, UC, and C districts. The, the hopes of this is to allow, with some conditions, the short-term rental, while still trying to maintain, uh, some order on where it's not going to be prohibited, where it's going to be prohibited, and, uh, allowed by right. And it would still be allowed, uh, it would still be allowed with that special exception, with the permit, and they'd still have to follow all the conditions that's outlined in the ordinance for short-term rentals. So, um, that's the table, table 1 update, and the table 2 update is, we've had a few issues with developers that have come in, um, I'm sure there's some developers here that, in this room, that have had some issues with trying to meet the requirements of the UC district. So with that, we had to relook at the table, and we decided to make some changes, um, with that, should the board, uh, like. The UC district was based on averages prior, and we realized going through that averages were somewhat very difficult to calculate, and it also was very prohibitive in some areas where two lots might be very well built, uh, built out, but then there's a lot next to it that has nothing built on it, so it really destroys that average. So with that, we kind of looked at what is currently there, and how to maintain the current character of this area by adding in a minimum front, side, and rear setback, both of five feet, which previously it was exempt on the side and rear in some of those areas, since it was the Georgetown River District. So, uh, but we also added in a stipulation that, in the note section, that if there was already something built out, and they were already at their, say, a one-foot setback, that they would be allowed to maintain that one-foot setback. The same thing with the green space, and their, and their side setbacks.
Well, they've been grandfathered in any event.
Correct.
Right.
So we're hoping that that will have a better impact on, on developers looking to pursue projects in that district in the future.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Mora from the board?
What's the process, how do we adopt this?
So, um, should we, you decide to adopt them, we'll need to schedule them for a public hearing, uh, perhaps the next planning board meeting, and allow it for the public input. And then, after that public hearing, should the board decide to, motion to send it on to city council, um, for adoption, it would then go through the council.
Okay, so are you looking to get a public hearing at the next planning board meeting?
I sure am.
Okay. Well, through that, I move that we schedule these, these changes, um, both changes, uh, to each table, uh, for a public hearing at our next planning board meeting, which is Tuesday, March?
Third.
Third.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilor Bowns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Jenna. Any discussion? All those in favors, raise your hand. Opposed? Yep, carries unanimously. Well done, Rob.
Uh, the next is not really, you don't need to take any action on it, um, uh, if you remember, a few months ago, we came in, uh, Dean and I, we were talking about rewriting the subdivision and site plan regulation to bring it up to the current standard, as it hasn't been updated since 2009 and 2015, prospectively. So as I was going through, looking at the enabling legislation for these documents, and, and, uh, the city code, I came across a little discrepancy. Chapter 89, which was adopted in 1991, referenced the minor site plan committee to, as the technical review committee. And it carried through the, in, and this is a subcommittee, um, that looks at projects that are of a certain size, that the board has delegated this power to. So, somewhere in between 2005 and 2006, uh, it miraculously changed names in the, in the city, and we began referencing it as the minor site plan committee. And at the same time, we make, recreated, created another committee, uh, the technical review committee, to look at all projects that went before the minor site plan committee, and the planning board, and the technical review aspect. So we're just looking to correct that anomaly, and actually rename that committee to what it is actually called today.
That's what we call a fine kettle of fish. Indeed.
Guess I haven't heard that reference before, but I will absolutely take your word for
It's an archaic reference, from an ancient being. So what would you have us do, sir?
Um, it's really just to inform you that, that was discovered, and we're gonna pursue making that change in the city code.
We to impose punishments, or just... You want us to schedule a public hearing on that, too?
Nope, nope, I was just informing you.
Okay. Well, good, good work catching that.
So.
Is the technical review committee and the mi- minor site plan committee, are they gonna be the same people?
They're, they're pretty much the same people, yes.
So we just put a different tag in front of them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But they meet at different times?
But they meet at different times, and they're referenced as two different boards within the, the site plan and subdivision regulation, and we just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying it correctly to applicants coming forward.
Just, uh, for my edification, who are the current members of this?
Um, so we have, uh, Dean, uh, who's the chair of the minor site plan committee, uh, this is for minor site plan, and then you have, oh, sorry, Wes Anderson is the chair, and then you have Dean, and then, uh, assessing?
Department heads.
The water department, yes, department heads.
Gotcha.
And it's the same overall departments that make up that technical review committee that look at everything.
And the function is essentially the same, but the jurisdiction's slightly different?
Correct.
Is that what it is? They, they do intake, triage, whatever, they?
So the minor site?
Assess the va- the, the, the regulatory issues in the?
Correct. So, minor site plan committee can actually approve some of the smaller applications, whereas in the technical review committee, it's not approving anything, they're just fact-finding and doing the research to bring it forward to both these, uh, fine boards.
Right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
As always. All right, uh, we have an extension, I believe, next. Item 7, uh, PL 2017-0109SP, 423 Main Street, um, it's an extension, or 2, September 1st, 2020. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
423?
Mr. Chairman.
Main Street. Mr. Smith, sir.
Steve Smith, for the record, uh, here representing the applicant, asking for an extension, I think this is the second extension, if I'm not mistaken. They attempted to get the site work done before the weather came in, and wasn't able to do that. The building is basically done, uh, but there is minor things to be done in the site work, the final pavement striping, they're building and repairing some sidewalks and that kind of stuff. So we've asked for an extension, I think I asked for it until? September. They believe that they'll be done by June, but I didn't wanna take any chances.
It looks like they're almost done, except for landscaping.
Well, it is.
They've started the CO process.
Okay, now, this won't hold up their certificate of occupancy, will it?
They've already got that.
They already got it, okay.
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna, on the record, I'm gonna abstain from the vote, because I've just made an application for my parents at Sunrise House, so, just so you know. In the interest of full disclosure, I shall not vote on this one. Okay.
Well, I move to approve the extension to suspend one, 2020.
I second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
If you're not voting to anything now, we don't have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Okay.
This is a quorum, isn't it?
Not if you're not voting.
I'm just abstaining.
Okay. Just, just asking a question?
Yeah, I'm just abstaining, I don't have to, I don't have a conflict, an actual conflict at this point, but...
You do what you, you're comfortable doing.
Okay, I shall do that. All right, any, uh, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. Um, we have some continued public hearings. These people, uh, are continued an extra month, because we, we lacked a quorum in January. The January meeting, which was the week right after the holiday, uh, we could not muster together enough members. I would urge any members of the public that are here, or those of you that may be, for whatever reason, watching on YouTube later, to consider, um, going to the city website, assuming you are a city resident, um, and downloading the application form, and getting involved. It's really interesting work, um, it's not too onerous, um, and I think it's pretty rewarding to be involved in public service like this. And, um, it's important, I think, as any developer will tell you, that we do not miss meetings, uh, especially when things start to heat up, uh, and the, uh, and the workload goes up. So, with that little introduction, I'm gonna call, um, I guess, 8.1, PL 2019-0124SU, 55 Bay Street, 61 Esquam Avenue, it's a boundary line adjustment, continued from the December 3rd meeting.
Yes, and, uh, for those that voted on that, continuous from December 3rd, um, uh, my, my, my dad happened to pass away that early morning, and I was not in very good shape to come to the meeting, so the staff graciously, um, continued them till the January meeting, and you all voted for that, so I appreciate it very much.
Very, very sorry to hear that.
Can I ask a question? Why aren't we hearing item 8.1 and 9.1 at the same time?
There, we could. There were two completely, uh, there were two?
Different app-
Two different applications.
One is to amend the site plan. Point taken, though, I think, as a, as a matter of, um-
It's the same applicant, it's, it's the same property.
Yeah, you could, you could probably combine your presentations rather effortlessly. If the applicant doesn't mind, we could combine these two.
Okay, um, I will be very speedy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear about your dad. He's a good man. Richard Bruyard.
Okay, um, this is a very, um, simple boundary line adjustment. Basically, um, the Goons and I are swapping properties. If you look at parcel B, the Goons' building is right on their line, they have no setback, they have no place to put snow, they have no place to put anything, so they were very excited to get this 10 feet. I, uh, not Brown, uh, purchased this little duplex, which you're gonna see in the next application, to be able to, uh, launch boats into the river. So I needed this little parcel A, so I can go from 55 Bay Street across this little piece, and into, uh, 91 Esquam Avenue.
Right.
So basically, they are getting parcel B, I am getting parcel A, um, and you will see on the next plan, this is the track that the forklift would go, so you can see why it's, I'm doing this, and why they need to have property that, I mean, they can't even put up a ladder, I mean, the building is, is right on the line.
Right.
So that is pretty much the boundary line adjustment. I will say also one thing, um, they, this is impervious, it's all concrete, and this is just gravel. So their actual impervious lot coverage is going down, they're, they're actually having more land that percolates water, and actually breathes, and, uh, and, and basically, my lot coverage is, is actually, uh, going up a little bit, but I'm still within the 80% that I'm allowed, so it's kind of a win-win situation, um, with that, too. Also, when you see the other site plan for the boat storage building, it, it spreads the buildings out, and, and makes it less congested.
Did you want to address us on, uh, the amendment to the site plan, too?
Uh, yes, um, but I just wanted to finish with this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if there's any questions, I'll just, I'm gonna leave that up, with the other plan up.
Any questions about the BLA? Okay, I guess not.
I do.
Oh.
I do. And my question is not related to the simple land swaps, so that you can have property in which you can move boats on, and they can have a little more space to put some snow there. But my question goes to the second portion, or the site plan amendments, that you're proposing, and some of the concerns expressed by, um, uh, the director of DPW.
And I'd love to address that, but if that's not with this?
I know it's not with this, but assume that somebody said no to their second plan, would you still go forward with the land swap?
Yes, because I, I think-
Phil, I wanna know.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant regarding the boundary line adjustment? Well, if not, then we're gonna ask the applicant to present on, um, item 9.1, which is the proposal to amend the previously approved site plan.
Take up? The request for a boundary line adjustment, and vote on that first. Take up the request for a boundary line adjustment, and vote on that first?
Well, it's a separate application, so you need to-
I do.
Okay.
You, you wanna follow up on this first? From the first part?
When I say combine them, we don't make the applicant come up again, sit down, and come back up again, but I, I don't know, it's up to you. I thought it would be, uh, appropriate to vote on this land swap. Uh, that's the reason I asked him the question.
That makes sense to me, people know.
All right, then, um, can I have a motion regarding this boundary line adjustment?
Do you wanna open this?
Oh, we need to have a public hearing, that's it. I was gonna have, like, a combined, that's all right. Um, we're gonna hold a public hearing at this point, um, on the boundary line adjustment that Attorney Bruyard has just, um, presented to us, um, at 6:51, I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. Are there any abutters here that wish to be heard? This is about 55 Bay Street. Any abutters? Any members of the public? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:51. Now, would anyone care to make a motion?
Uh, with respect to application PL 2019-024SU, um, boundary line adjustment at 55 Bay Street, uh, I move that we adopt the, uh, we grant conditional approval, uh, where the criteria is adopted by, uh, the planning department, one, numbers one and two.
Motion by Councilor Bowns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, Ms. Jenna. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. So, we are now on 9.1.
Um, this, um, is an amended site plan, the site plan has already been approved, but, um, what happened was, uh, 91 Esquam Avenue, uh, was purchased, and, um, you guys just approved the boundary line adjustment. So basically, this site plan, uh, increases the size of the building from 90 by 110 to 110 by 110, and that's to allow a 60-foot aisle in the middle of the building, and valet service. And we have two locations for valet service, we have the Martell's ramp, and we have a future launch site at 91 Esquam Avenue. And basically, um, there is 22 parking spots on the outside, and there's 22 parking spots on the inside. And, uh, this issue of the road situation brought up by Counselor Bowns is not something that, uh, just came up. In fact, um, I want the board to know that we were, in fact, working with DPW and planning, and, um, basically, we believe that we meet all state statutes as to weight loading, uh, the capacity of the road, and the statute that allows the weight to be, um, to be enough weight, uh, on the road. And those were all presented to DPW in a memo. Uh, we also have our particular forklift, which is a small one, because we don't have as big a boats, and I actually have this memorandum dated December 22nd to Land Use and DPW, attention, Krista, uh, and I laid out all this information, and I gave it to you, and I also, um, enclosed the state motor vehicle statute, and basically, the maximum, uh, weight allowable on a non-interstate road is 36,000 pounds, if you have a two-axle vehicle, um, where the axles are not more than 10 feet apart. My forklift, with the boat on it, weighs 35,490, so I'm under by 500 pounds. Also, the maximum allowable gross vehicle weight, that's the forklift itself, my forklift is 33, 32,490 pounds, the, for a two-axle vehicle, the statutory maximum is 33,400. So I meet these weight targets. Furthermore, um, this plan has a lot of street improvements, and one thing that wasn't in that article, is that we're putting underground utilities down Winter Squam Avenue, so that when we put boats in and out, we're not gonna hit any power lines. So we're gonna dig up the whole street anyway, and when I was out there with Krista, I said that I would rebuild the street, however they think is appropriate, at this crossing here, and this section here. So this is the stuff that I've already agreed to do.
So you're gonna rebuild the streets?
No, I'm gonna rebuild the streets. I'm gonna rebuild this street, because we're putting underground in.
Okay.
And then this street, we're putting this whole sidewalk down here, so this is all, this, half of the street's gonna get paved anyway, because we have to put this walkway in. And we have, the other thing is, we have a very nice, this is, this is kind of a very industrial, not very nice-looking area, but there's a landscape plan that we have, that's got trees and grass, um, and, um... It's a real improvement to what's there. And, um, if one bothers to look at the plans, there's a landscaped buffer and a walkway all the way around here, all the way down the street, there's a stockade fence on the Wau Trail, there's six or seven trees along here, there's trees and grass along here. This whole, um, road will be repaved, because we're gonna have to dig it up to put the underground in. And we're going all the way from this corner, all the way down here, past where it's shown on the plan with the underground, so we don't hit anything. So, um, I, I really do take some, uh, umbrage with the fact that this wasn't addressed, because it was thoroughly addressed, and it was addressed back in November, um, and, uh, we're under limit, uh, and, um, uh, you know, this, this project-
You're just barely under limit.
We're under limit.
Just barely.
We're under limit. And, and I guess I would-
I guess both of our statements are accurate, aren't they?
Yeah, but I would also just say one thing, David, just to give you a little perspective. Basically, you can have a vehicle on a city street that's 73,280 pounds, if you have enough axles. So all I'm trying to say is, 73,000 versus 35,490, it's about half, so this is certainly not the biggest friggin' load.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is.
And, and the other, and the other-
But Bay Street is not in good shape right now, you agree?
No, I, I realize that, but, but when I do all this, when, when this is done, it has to be fixed.
Well, I hear you, you're fixing Winter Squam, I hear you, I hear you doing that, I don't hear you say you're going to, you're gonna, you're gonna put in sidewalks and, and trees.
There's a wa- there's a wa- this already drains there, if you look at the plans, they're already there. The walkway's there, the, this is, there's a walk all the way down here.
And there, what's, what does that got to do with the load? What's landscaping or sidewalks or anything got to do with the Bay Street's ability to carry the load?
This is what it has to do with it. Work's gotta be done on the sides of the road. We said that while we were at it, we would make any improvements that they deemed necessary to handle the operations of the forklift. That was said back in October and November, and a memo was provided to them, because they said this was a concern.
So you wouldn't mind that being a part of the conditions of approval?
No.
Okay. Are there any other members of the board that would like to question Attorney Bruyard?
Phil, what's, what size boats are we gonna be transporting?
Well, basically, Michael, uh, if you look at this memorandum, um, your average for pontoon boat on 141 is about 22 feet long, and it weighs about 3,000 pounds, so, uh, that's the weight-
That's your plan, is?
And, 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 and that's a pretty good sized one, there's a lot of smaller ones.
Right.
There's not a lot of big ones.
You'd be size limited, anyway, wouldn't you, based on the size?
Well, we have 25-foot racks, so-
Right.
And, and then the motor tips up, so, you know, it's, you can only take a 24 or 25-foot boat.
So you're gonna do, like, day service, people are gonna call you up, put my boat in? People are gonna call you up, put my boat in?
Well, yes.
That's the plan.
That's, that's valet, that's what we're asking.
Right.
Any other questions? I'd love to hear from staff on this one.
So I, I think the applicant sufficiently covered the concerns that DPW had with the road construction and that the heavier weight of the load with, coupled with the forklift, could possibly cause damage to the city street should it be over a certain weight limit and that those roads were not designed for larger vehicles with carrying a load. So that, that is also a concern. DPW also had, brought up other concerns such as whether it was registered or unregistered, which has to do with whether it's allowed on the road or not. Also, as Counselor Bowns brought up, that the board could choose to make a recommendation or condition part of that approval that should they approve this, the applicant would be responsible for rebuilding the road to a suitable standard to support the weight of those said vehicles on that surface.
Well, I'm concerned that the memo from Wes is that according to state statute, the allowable vehicle gross weight is 33,400. And they're coming in at 35,490. Close, but still under.
If you read the statute, I attached the statute. One is the gro, he's quoting gross vehicle weight, I'm, which is just the vehicle. I'm quoting the weight and the, and the, and the, and the, and the cargo. Yes. We're both right.
I thought I heard you say, Phil, that you were already planning on building the road to standards where the crossings would be?
Yes. And I've already had that conversation.
So how far apart are the two crossings on Bay Street?
Well, one is in front of 9-1 of Squam Avenue over here.
Yeah.
Right there with, where the boundary line is.
I know where, I'm talking about feet. How many feet are they apart?
Probably 300, 400.
So, so what we're discussing then is whether or not you're gonna improve that extra 300 feet?
Well, I'm gonna improve it anyway because I gotta dig it up to...
I know.
I'm not, I'm not gonna put the weight-bearing fill underneath, but I've gotta repave the road and I've gotta put this landscape in and because we're going all the way down here to a pole underground.
So wait a minute, you're not gonna put the weight-bearing fill underneath?
I'm gonna put it where we're going.
So you're gonna dig...
I'm gonna put the weight-bearing fill wherever it's necessary to carry my load. I'm not putting it down the whole street where we're not going.
You don't have to put it down the whole street.
So I gotta follow up.
That's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing. But I'm telling you, I gotta pave this and improve this whole street.
Yeah.
Because I'm digging it up to put the underground in.
Can I ask a follow-up of my own question, David?
I didn't mean to interrupt, my apologies.
So what you're talking about then is you've got a street that's approximately, you want to say 450 feet long, 400 feet long?
Well, you...
And you're gonna dig two excavated trenches across the street and fill in extra gravel or whatever you need to do to reinforce those two strips?
Whatever they...
Like giant crosswalks for your, for your vehicle, right?
Right. Well, except that it's gonna be, it's not, you're not gonna know that, it's gonna be underneath.
I ended, no, I know that. We'll know it though, that's what we're talking about. So that the excavated area in between, the area in between, you're, you're saying, well, the only excavation will be if we do curbs or edges or things like that in that section?
Yeah, we're gonna have to repave it because we're gonna dig it up to put underground utilities.
I understand that. And those will probably run in the roadbed, right?
Yes, some, because we have to go across and we have to go across to give people service.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a big kink in your plans if indeed we did what Counselor Bowns is, is...
I planned on it.
Okay. All right.
This is, this is the thing that is such a, it's like this was some big news. It's no news.
I wish I read the paper and I'd know what you were talking about.
All right.
So are there any other questions for staff or the applicant by members of the board?
Is anybody from DPW here?
No, nobody from DPW is here this evening.
Okay, so...
Would you like to see if you can get input on, from Public Works on the memo that they submitted?
Yes. I would like input on that. I, I'm, I'm looking for a condition that that portion of the road from the exit from the proposed boat storage facility down Bay Street to the ramp, according to, with the agreement of the applicant, that they will comply with DPW's request in terms of what kind of structure we need, what kind of road we need when they start digging all that up. I heard the applicant agree with that.
And I told him I would do that.
Okay. What's the date on the, on the memo from Wes?
The date on the memo from Wes is from January 6.
Okay. All right.
And the memo that you filed, this, this memo, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I filed that in November, but Wes, at TRC, they came up with this issue about the weight. So I addressed it after TRC, and that's my memo after TRC.
Okay.
And so I, this was out there, we were working on it, so it wasn't...
Yeah, I, but, and I'm dealing in the, in the dark here, Phil, I'm, I'm not just trusting you at all.
No, I just want you to know, we, it's not like anybody's trying to get away from...
No, I, I, I get it. And I'm looking at the last sentence, it says, "I am working with the city attorney on a plan to bring all Marina operators into compliance with state statutes." And what I'm hearing from you is you've made representations to DPW that in fact you are in compliance with all state statutes, am I right?
Yes.
And that you're willing to work with them in terms of Bay Street issues. So that's, that's what I, that's what I'm hearing.
And that's 100% right.
And I just wanna get, I wanna get, it's not that I don't trust you, because I do. I wanna get the input from Wes or anybody at DPW who knows what they're talking about.
I just don't want, you know, I don't think I should have to rebuild it like a runway at Peas Air Force Base, though, I mean...
I don't think you should either.
Okay.
I want you to, I want you, look, you, you, I want you to have a place that functions well for you...
Me too.
At a cost that's reasonable to you...
Me too.
And that works for the city. That's all I want.
That's what I want, too.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions by any other members of the board?
Please. I, I like your project, okay? I think it's needed. It's, it's a good thing for the city. I'm concerned about the stockade fence along the Wild Trail. Like you're putting a brand-new building up and then, you know, you're gonna have the six-foot fence along the Wild Trail. Why, why do you have to hide your parking lot? You're gonna have some trees there as a parking lot in a brand-new building.
Well, we were, we were told that we had to...
You have to have a stockade fence?
Well, no, we had to have a visual type of buffer.
I believe through several boards, namely, I think the zoning board brought this up with permitted, with allowing him to do the use in that district originally that they had added in their, a condition that there's a security fence.
It, it may be a new building, but it's an ugly building.
It won't be worse than what's there now. It'd be much more attractive than what's there, I'm sure.
There are trees along the road.
Right, and, you know, I, I see the trees on the plan, but the people walking down the Wild Trail won't be able to see the trees, correct?
Well, that's...
If the fence is right against the Wild Trail...
That's, that's true. I, I do want you to know, I don't mind not having the fence, but we put the fence there because that's what the ZBA...
Well, if you have to have it, you have to have it, but I just, I don't think it's the best thing for aesthetics. Would you be opposed to fixing both sides of Bay Street?
Well, I've gotta come back. If you look at my little plan, I, I go down the right side of the road, I go in, I back up, and I come down the other side, so I would be doing both sides.
Both sides, okay.
I mean, I'm not putting the sidewalk in on the other side.
Yeah, I thought you said you're only gonna do one side of Bay Street, but, both sides, very good, very good.
So I, I have a question. So we went over all these weight requirements and stuff. What about the, the first issue here on Wes's thing saying that forklifts don't meet the requirements to get exemptions to use it according to state statutes?
Well, they're tractors, we disagree with that. I mean, they can, if you look at all the requirements to be on the road, lights, horns, directional signals, headlights, they can all be equipped with all that, so that's, I mean, they run their payloaders over the road and they're tractors and Busby does and everybody runs payloaders all over the place and they're all tractors.
Some of them will do 30 miles an hour.
Not, not, not this forklift.
No, I've seen the payloader zipping by the courthouse down at the cabin street.
You know road racing on Bay Street?
Yeah. Yeah, they won't be doing any forklift racing. Okay. I guess at this point, if there's no other questions, we're gonna open a public hearing on this matter at 7:11 PM. This is, as you all heard, what is that number here? It's PL 2018-0037, 55 Bay Street. Are there any abutters here that would like to be heard? Any abutters to this project? Come on up, please. Yeah. They just all know your name, sir, and...
My name's Ralph Langeman, I'm a butler across the street.
Hi, Ralph.
I own what's also known as Martell's Bait and Sport Shop, which it's actually in the Ralph Langeman Revocable Trust. Sitting back there, I just wanted to ask any of you board members, have you ever been down there? Do you understand where that is? I'm there seven days a week, okay? Stafford Oil uses that road with their, with their tractor trailers, hauling oil, they come down three, four, five times a day. That vacant lot used to be owned by Fred Fuller's. That was a bulk station, tractor trailers went in there every day. Every day, there's probably 10 to 15 tractor trailers that come down Bay Street so they don't have to go to Fair Street, come down and take that obnoxious corner. And you people are worried about this intersection. As a landowner across the street, I gotta tell you, it's, it's mind-boggling that you wanna make him jump through hoops, but everybody else has had carte blanche for how many years. So I, I'd like to hear your input on, on why you think this forklift is gonna destroy the road when I've watched tractor trailers make that turn and they haven't destroyed the road. Have you ever gone down and looked at it? I mean, I don't mean to be a smartass or anything, but...
I don't take it that way.
Well, I do sitting back there.
Well, I'm not trying to be a smartass.
Well, let's look, you, Ralph, you can finish your statement and then...
Okay, well, I'm just done, but I mean, I, you know, i- if you're gonna talk about something, you should know what you're talking about, okay? My background was I was a master mechanic for 40 years. I know probably more about forklifts and loaders and all this stuff. And it frustrates me to no end to hear that he can't register a forklift, but yet Busby or any other contractor can take a loader, put a set of forks on him, and, and register as a tractor.
That's not our issue, we're not here about...
Yes, it is, he just brought that up.
No, no, no.
He didn't think that Wes...
Ralph, please.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, just, just so, just so the record's clear.
No, that's okay, David, you don't have to respond. Are there any other abutters?
I'm not responding, I want the record to be clear. My concerns, I don't know anything about forklifts or weights or anything like that...
This is a public hearing.
And I don't pretend to. But my concerns are those addressed by Department of Public Works, our director. Those are concerns.
Can I have order here, please? This is a public hearing. Are there any abutters, any other abutters that wish to be heard? Are there any members of the general public that wish to be heard on this application? All right, sensing none, what is the pleasure of the board? We'll close the public hearing at 7:15. What is the pleasure of the board?
I, I think we should table this until we get the input from DPW.
Is that a motion to table?
Yeah.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, I'd like to be heard in opposition of the motion. We're gonna have a discussion on it. The Colby memo's been out there since the beginning of January, it's a month later. This thing was already continued once because the board didn't have a quorum. If we go back to Public Works for more input, guess what they're gonna say? The same thing that's in the memo. It would just add unnecessary delay, and I do not think it is appropriate for us to table this application that's probably before the board for consideration tonight.
I also believe Phil is doing everything that he can to get this project going through, willing to rebuild the road, bury the lines.
I also heard him say that he, he's willing to accept modifications to the recommendations for conditions that were made by staff in order to accommodate the board's concerns this evening. So for that reason, I, I speak in opposition. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on the motion? Sensing none, or call the question. All those in favor of tabling this application signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Motion fails. So now we have the application itself. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Okay, I'll do it. Which numbers are we using here?
I think we're on...
P...
PL 2019-13, uh, 0037, 2018-0037.
0037.
Sorry.
I have 2019-0124SU.
No, we're at 9.1.
Oh, we're, we're down there, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we could approve both of them at one time, can't we?
We already approved the boundary line adjustment.
We did, okay.
I'll make a motion to be approved, PL 2018-0037 SP, 55 Bay Street. The site plan looks good as long as the road is improved as Phil promised. Looks good to me.
Motion by Ms. Strucker.
Do we need to put a condition?
If the, if the board is making a condition to approve the application, if we want to make a condition to approve it with staff recommendations and then with the additional recommendation perhaps...
From DPW.
That the road is constructed to, to somewhat of a standard, to DPW standards in their coordination.
All right, so the suggestion is made that your motion be modified to include language that it be a condition of approval that, that Bay Street be improved to DW, DPW's, what standard?
The, the travel paths for the forklift and with the load be built to the standards as outlined by DPW for that weight load and to city standards.
Okay. So said. All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Jenna. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Abstained? All right, we have one abstention, the motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Matter is approved. Subject to the condition. All right, we are, I believe, I jumped around a little, doing...
903 Union Avenue.
8.2, right? Right, on page one, we're at 8.2? All right. This is PL 2019-0108 SP and 0115 CUP, 903 Union Avenue. And is there an applicant here? This is a continued acceptance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is for...
Oh, this was accepted, this is the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You may continue.
This is for a small 20-car parking lot on Union Avenue. This was originally gonna be a boat storage building, but we did borings into the, into the hill and there was big stones there, so we couldn't go back into the hill the way we wanted to. So we, we basically found out where the rocks were and we put the retaining wall as far back as we could without getting into any big excavation or blasting. And what we've come up with is a, is a 20-car parking lot that could be used for parking by various businesses across the street or, or down the street. And we would like, in, in the meantime, I'm working with the Buzzbees to allow them to use it as a staging site for their work on Union Avenue. And it ultimately would just be a parking lot. It's got two drainage structures, it's got some snow storage areas, it's got some nice landscaping that's gonna go there, so it's, it's gonna be a nice little spot for somebody.
And just to be clear, this is the currently vacant lot at the corner of Walnut and Union Avenue?
That's exactly correct.
So it's about a block north of, say, Fratello's?
Yes, it's, it's within a thousand feet under the ultimate, uh...
Two blocks north.
Yeah, it's, but it's within, um, it's within nine hundred and fifty feet of the Opera House and it's probably nine hundred feet to Fratello's and, um, it, the, the, the parking isn't improving down there with the various businesses that are going in there. There's, there's a need for parking in that area.
Okay. All right, um, are there any questions for the applicant on this one? Well, what's the staff?
I would just like to say one thing. When you drive by there now, that's pretty much what it's going to be, except for a retaining wall in the back. That's kind of it.
Yeah, okay. All right, staff?
We have thoroughly reviewed the application with the applicant and they've met all, all of our requirements. Um, I think the only one, uh, consideration that, um, planning had was, uh, that Dean wanted me to mention was perhaps this might not have been the highest and best use of this property. Though there, as the applicant has stated, there's multiple parking issues in that area as well. And there's no actual, uh, user as of yet for that parking.
And if Director Trefethan was here, I would say that it's a pretty small lot in a commercial zone. It might support a multifamily, which is what was there before. But that's for the applicant to decide what the best use is. And, uh, as a Lakeport resident, I like to see landowners, um, engaging in a little speculation from time to time as to the future development of the square. And I will also point out, he's a smart fellow, and if it doesn't work out, you can always build on it down the road.
You can always change your mind.
That's all right. So what we got here, folks, is a parking lot. All right, any other questions for staff or the applicant before I call the public hearing?
I, I would emphasize that Lakeport needs parking.
Yes, off-street parking is a very...
I think so too.
Could be a valuable commodity down the road, so to speak. So, um, that point, then, at seven twenty-four, um, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any butters to this property that would like to be heard? Now, where are the property there?
Nine oh three, is it, Union Ave? Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard? Going once? Going twice? All right, seven twenty-four and a half, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, we'll ask the board, what business would they like to conduct? Don't all jump in at once now.
I'll motion to accept application, or am I accepting or approving? Sorry. Approving application, P L twenty nineteen zero one zero eight S P and zero one one five C U P at nine oh three Union Ave.
We have a motion by Ms. Jenna. Is there a second?
Do we begin with staff recommendations for conditions of approval?
Uh, yes.
Yes, with staff recommendations, conditions.
We have to always reference the, yeah, because otherwise, what conditions did we just approve? Very good. Subject to the conditions in the staff report or something to that effect.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Beliveau. Are there any, just, any discussion on the motion? Uh, sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed?
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Again, my condolences, mister. Attorney Broyard. All right, where is that? Next page, folks. Flipping everything around. Ah, yes, there it is. Moving right along. Nine point two. Right? P L twenty nineteen zero one three seven S P and zero one three eight C U P and zero one three nine C U P. And wait for it, zero one four oh C U P. And in a change of pace, it's a boat storage facility. Um, on, uh, owned by Winasquaw Marine. It's on, located at one twenty-nine Channel Lane. And it's a proposal to replace, uh, an existing sixteen thousand square foot boat storage building with a twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot building of forty-five feet in height. And the subject of site work, et cetera. So this was accepted on the third, so we're here to approve it. I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Um, good evening. I'm, I'm Ed Crawford. I'm the owner of Winasquaw Marine. Uh, I'm going to give a very short intro, just introduce myself and some facts about the marina. And then Aaron and Russell, engineers from Wilcox and Barton, will actually do the presentation.
Okay. Welcome.
I started the, uh, uh, Winasquaw Marine in Belmont in nineteen seventy-seven. We've been in operation for forty-three years. Um, in two thousand seventeen, I bought the former Channel Marine property. Uh, and we've been in the process of renovating and fixing it up and getting it, getting it back in shape. Uh, this building would be, uh, our first big, our first big project there. Uh, the building that's there now is eighty feet by two hundred feet. Uh, it was from the late fifties. It's an old building, needs a little repair. Uh, it was sized for smaller, uh, you know, boats back in the fifties were under seven feet wide. Now they're, um, eight and a half feet and, uh, and of course, a little bit longer sometimes. Um, the proposed building is a hundred fourteen feet by two hundred feet. The building will sit in the same, in the same area. Winasquaw Marine is a, uh, it's family-owned. Um, uh, I started it. Uh, my son and daughter are involved in it and my wife is, is also involved. So it's, uh, one of us is, is always at, or always at the properties during the day. And I guess that's it. I'll turn it over to, uh, to Aaron and Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Good evening, Board. My name is Erin Lambert. I'm with Wilcox and Barton. Um, so I'm going to walk you through the site plan application that's before you today. So, um, as Ed mentioned, there's an existing sixteen thousand square foot boat storage building that will be demolished in the new twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot building which will be placed in approximately the same location, although it's slightly different dimensions. Um, the new building will be forty-four, forty-five feet high, which allows for four racks of boat storage within the building. It will be fully enclosed, um, which is a real benefit for security. Um, and the boats will no longer need to be wrapped like they are today. So there's an environmental savings tonight, having to use all that wrap. The boats will be driven in, in the fall, kept there for long-term storage out of the winter, and then taken out again in the spring. So the site itself is three point seven acres. Um, the total project is just around one acre. Um, it is located in the commercial resort zone. Um, it is exempt from front and side setbacks. Um, there is a sixty-foot maximum building height, so we are below that with the new building. Um, the application does have three conditional use permits that we're asking for. One is for the use, one is for minor disturbance of the wetland buffer, um, and one is a shared parking arrangement, alternative parking arrangement that I'll speak to with the property on the water at ninety-six Channel Lane. Um, so the project does, um, increase the impervious surface by about twenty-three hundred square feet, but we're also removing, um, thirty-two hundred square feet of gravel and restoring that to grass. So the project has a net decrease, um, in impervious area. We are building in some drainage controls to further make sure that we are meeting or reducing the runoff from our site in all our marveled storm events. So there'll be a drip edge, shed roof, will be a drip edge on each side. Um, there's a swale running down the south side, um, and then we put in a small pond. Um, so like I said, um, there will be a net decrease, um, in, or match of the, the rate of runoff and the volume of runoff in all of our storm events. So the improvements to the site include, um, a little bit of parking, a little bit of pavement, which we'll talk about, um, for the conditional use permit, um, and those drainage controls. Um, the building is not connected to municipal water and sewer. It's going to reuse an existing electric service. Um, they are going to put some new sight lighting on, but it will be limited to the north side and over the doors. Um, there will be no sight lighting on the south side, which is directly, um, next to a residential butter. Um, so the three conditional use permits, the first one is for the use to allow, um, a principal use of long-term storage in the commercial resort zone. Um, the second is for, uh, minor disturbance of the wetland buffer. So we are repaving three hundred square feet that's in the buffer and doing some minor regrading. Um, the area that's being regraded will be restored with grass and stabilized with lumen seed when we're done. Um, but to make the, uh, driveway accommodate the slightly larger building, um, we do have to make some changes, uh, to the driveway. Um, we are, um, staying out of the wetland. There is a wetland located on the north side. Um, we're staying out of the wetland, um, and the plans clearly delineate that the contractor needs to put construction fence and make sure all of their, um, disturbance stays outside of the wetland. Um, and we'll keep an eye on that and do an inspection at the start of construction so they are fully aware of where that, that boundary is, that's a, that's a no disturb boundary. Uh, and then lastly, um, there's a conditional use permit for alternative parking. Um, and this goes back to in two thousand eight, um, there was a subdivision plan. And the way that ninety-six Channel Lane and this property at one twenty-nine, the way they achieved their parking was through a shared parking arrangement. Um, and so because, um, we're modifying this property at one twenty-nine, it requires two more parking spaces. We wanted to update the conditional use permit to ensure that both properties stay current with local zoning. Um, so the way this works is that this property isn't open to the public. The only people that are going there are employees who are bringing the boats, um, to and from. Um, this will be available for storage of cars in the summer, so if people are parking to use the marina, but they won't be driving to this property. An employee would drive the car and it, it's available to be parked inside of the building because there'll be no boats there. There'll only be boats in the building during the winter.
Is this, uh, is there a unity of title now between the two properties?
I believe so. They're shared ownership, the two properties?
Absolutely. So, so it was an agreement against, uh, between two separate entities and now they're both owned by the Crawfords?
Winasquaw Enterprises.
Right, okay.
Owns both, exactly. Um, so like we said, this has been in existence, um, but because this building is slightly larger or required two more spaces, um, the conditional use permit is to ensure that both properties stay compliant. Um, the two properties would require a hundred and fifty-eight spaces, um, and there's room for more than a hundred and seventy. Um, and like I said, this is really more for the, the summer months when there's more people coming to the marina and this makes sure that there's adequate parking, um, for those vehicles. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right then, thank you. Are there any questions?
I guess my only concern is, and if you could address it, is the additional three hundred square feet of new pavement, um, in the wetland buffer.
It's replacing existing.
Yeah, it's replacing existing. So we're not increasing it, it's just that we're replacing it because it, there's a dash line here in the plan and this is where, um, they are now, so it's swinging out a little bit.
Okay, so you're not doing any, you're going to leave it as it is, except you're going to approach on it in order to accomplish that?
Yeah, because the building is jetting out, we have to change the grades a little bit. So we're removing the pavement, we're regrading it, building the building and regrading it, putting the pavement back in.
Okay.
The undisturbed area, um, so it's not more pavement, but it is going to be new pavement in the buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. The stormwater, uh, where does that end up?
Uh, there's a couple of different places. Um, so there's stormwater that runs on the south side and makes its way all pretty much makes its way down towards Channel Lane. Um, and then this upland watershed, a lot of it comes down. We have a swell behind our building.
On the south side?
Yep. So, there's some water that comes down from the upper watershed and is already directed to this, this pond. Um, it's actually a stormwater pond and wetlands plants have grown, so that's the wetland we're not disturbing. So this water comes down and is conveyed through pipes and discharges right here. And then there's a swell on this side of the building, which will accept the water from this half of the roof. Um, and again, that sort of makes its way overland down towards Channel Lane. Um, so the one thing that we are doing, um, to eliminate water just sheet flowing, we've put in a small depression here. Most of the water will infiltrate, but if it were needed, there's an overflow that will go to that same location.
So nothing's being discharged into the channel? No, all right. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant? Um, sensing none, um, what would the staff care to advise us on this one?
I think the applicant explained it very well. They asked for, um, three additional C U Ps, uh, for the wetland, the alternative parking and for the boat storage. And they sufficiently covered all of those and they've met all of our requirements going forward for this application.
All right. Great. All right, then, why don't we open the public hearing at, uh, seven thirty-five P M? Are there any butters here that would like to be heard? Any butters to this property, Winasquaw Marine is going to rehab on the channel? Okay, any members of the general public wish to be heard? Going once? Going twice? We'll close the public hearing barely a minute later. What is the board's plan?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the P L two zero one nine dash zero one three seven S P, zero one three eight C U P and zero one three nine C U P and zero one four zero C U P, accepting also the staff recommendations for that, um, for approval of the Channel Marine upgrades.
I think you left out two oh one nine zero zero nine two S P.
I don't see that one, David?
The very first one.
The very first.
Zero one three seven?
P L two oh one nine zero zero nine two S P.
Don't have that.
I don't see that.
It's not on our agenda.
Not on mine either.
It's on the application.
It sure is.
Well, I think that, I think that must be a typo on the...
On the agenda, right?
Uh, no, I think the agenda is the...
Good catch.
It's on the application. It should be one three seven, one three eight, one three nine and one four zero. All consecutive numbers.
Not only that, they're in a row. Well, heck, there's no help there for me. All right. Yeah, yeah. Yes, I never, I never look at that when I'm doing the motions. I'm writing all my notes on these. Can the applicant help us out here? Do you know what the application number is that we're talking about?
No.
Are there four or five?
It should be zero one three seven.
Zero one three seven is the correct one. There's four, right? Okay. All right, good catch, David. So, um...
So it's, it, uh, zero zero nine two S P is wrong. It should be just zero zero one three seven, zero one three, one three seven.
What's on the agenda is correct.
Okay.
As, as motioned.
One three seven through one forty. All right, and, uh, was there a second?
I'll second.
Was second by Ms. Jenna. Is there any discussion on said motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Well, there we go. You know, with all these new boat storage buildings going up, I think what we need are more mural artists.
Thank you very much for your time.
Don't you think? I got one at the end of my street. I was thinking of doing light shows on the side. It's white. Be perfect. Don't you think? Yeah, we could sit in that parking lot. I'll sell popcorn. We could show movies on the side of it, right? Steve, we could, couldn't we? Erica wouldn't mind.
You probably could do that.
All right, we are at, where are we at, for God's sake? Nine point three? Little progress. P L twenty nineteen dash zero one four two S P and zero one four four C U P, seven eighty-one Union Avenue slash twenty-seven Clinton Street, uh, otherwise, uh, known as whatever we're calling it, the Lakeport Opera House? Is that what we're calling it? I still call it the Odd Fellows Block. That's how old I am.
You're older than I am, sir. I wouldn't know.
I'm not older than you are by much.
I'm older than both of you.
You stay out of this. Seriously, you have no dog in this fight.
I tried.
I know. The chair recognizes Stephen Smith and Stephen Smith and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the rocket, Steve Smith, Steve Smith and Associates, I'm here tonight, uh, representing Antaeus Holdings. Antaeus Holdings LTD. It's Mr. Scott Everett. Property at 781 Union Avenue and 27 Clinton Street. This is my third or fourth visit to the planning board on this project.
Gets better.
You've allowed me to speak a couple of times, and a couple of times you told me to go home.
In all due respect, though, we did it with great reluctance.
And you've probably seen this picture because I passed it out, but I wasn't quite sure whether it would be a...
I love the fact that it imagines that there are no abutting properties.
It does, it does a good job.
That is, that's a view of Lakeport that I find somewhat disconcerting.
When you're sitting at Dallas, it's pretty hard to imagine.
Has Chaos and Kindness seen this view?
I'm here tonight asking for site plan approval and conditional use permit under your urban commercial zone. I came before the board with a pre-design review of these plans that are on the board, which is part of the requirement under the CUP, and then filed our application for this project. Our goal here is to, the top plan is an existing conditions plan, the bottom plan is proposed improvements, and it's a very small piece of property, so it's hard to really see any major improvements. But this is the Opera House lot and the lot pretty much comes back to this dash line here with the building in the front, gravel parking in the back, there's a driveway, paved driveway that crosses the line between 781 and 27 Clinton Street, then a shed, a residential house with another driveway here, so there's, and this is gravel parking in here, so there's like three points of access off from Clinton Street right now with this house in the back. Our goal is to combine those lots, merge them together as one. We did come in and obtain an administrative approval back in August of 2019 to rehab the first floor. And the reason we were able to get administrative approval is because we're rehabbing uses that were already, had been in the building.
Yep.
And under that first floor rehab, which is already, you've seen them working there, they've got the scaffolding.
The scaffolding was an improvement.
Yep. And the first floor, we're proposing a unit one of a little over 3,000 square feet of office space, another unit of only 221 square feet, which is a salon, there's a barber shop there now, and then unit three of 733 square feet for a coffee shop. We're here tonight for site plan, overall site plan and conditional use permit to restore the rest of the building, take the second floor, which is the Opera House, restore that as an Opera House. It is my understanding that the coffee shop that's going in is actually going to utilize a portion of the upstairs Opera House area because there is a room right over where the coffee shop's going to be. And that's going to be combined with the coffee shop, when the coffee shop's open and when the Opera House is operating, the coffee shop will operate that upstairs area for the Opera House.
Which corner is the coffee shop going to be on?
Well, the coffee shop is going to be basically in this area right here. So you've got the salons in the back corner.
Right.
The coffee shop's in here and then the office space is in here. And this room right here, up in the Opera House, right over the coffee shop is the one that's, my understanding, is...
So the corner of Clinton and Union?
Union.
Which is the old post office space?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I guess it's been a number of things.
A lot of things in there.
In the past. And then the third floor, we're proposing to have two residential units. As part of this proposal, we're proposing to put a small addition on the back in this area here. And the reason for that is twofold. We need to have secondary access, second, third floors. We can't do it with the stairway that's in there now, it doesn't meet code, can't meet code. So that back entrance area is going to provide that second means of access plus an elevator for handicap access into the facility. And that's right in this back corner right here. And it's 11 feet wide by 34 feet long. That'll accommodate an entryway, an elevator, stairways that goes to all the floors on the side. The building, if you've gone by there lately, the building that was there, the residential unit, has already been removed. It's been demoed, we went to the, what is it, is it the Heritage Commission and got their approval. And the building has since, I filed this application, has been removed. In the back area there, we're going to move the entrance, we're doing away with the three entrances, we're putting one entrance all the way down to this westerly end of the property, getting as far away from the Union Avenue intersection as possible.
Right.
Will improve any activity at that intersection by putting it down there, one entrance. We'll be providing 13 new parking spaces back here, a place for a dumpster, we're doing a walkway out of porous pavement. We're proposing four or five street, I guess four street trees in this area here where we can fit them, and then some low shrub in this area here so that we don't impact site distances coming in and out of the property onto Clinton Street. We're proposing a fence along this area here in the back, there's already a fence along here. This abuts the housing project that's in this area here. Stormwater treatment, we are putting a stormwater treatment facility because the property is so small underneath the parking lot in this area here, which will eventually get into the catch basin that's on Clinton Street. There are some overhead power lines that are coming through here that are going to be redone. I don't believe it's going to cross there anymore, it's going to come into this corner of the building. I believe that we meet the standards both in the site planning process and your urban commercial zone for the CUP. We don't have any issues with the staff's report and recommendations. I'm happy to answer whatever questions I can. Mr. Chairman.
What is the SCE?
Hmm?
Right at the entrance, the new curb cut, that, it says SCE?
That's a secured entrance during construction so that it doesn't track mud out into the Clinton Street. Keeps, tries to keep the pavement clean.
Okay.
Temporary.
But that will be ultimately the final entrance, right?
Ultimately, yeah, it will be paved.
Okay. All right, thank you. Once again, this iPad, if it's too many plans loaded on the item, it doesn't, we keep getting an error message. It's probably the website rather than the iPad, although it is an Apple product. Okay.
Very reliable. The tree products are better.
The tree products are much better.
We're going to try and go green.
Are there any questions for Mr. Smith at this time from the board? Sensing none, then we'll hear from the staff about this interesting...
They have been to the board several times now, especially, they were one of the first to come through for the performance zoning for the CUP, for that new district. They have come in and they've met all of our requirements, they've had to do a lot of juggling with timelines, working with public works, to make sure things got done, especially since they were paving the road in front of the building. And they previously got the administrative approval to start the work on the first floor, as Stephen Smith mentioned earlier.
And they got a demo permit on Clinton Street?
They did go to Heritage Commission, got the demo permit, and have already removed the residence in the rear of the property now. So if the board sort of decided to approve this application, they would hopefully use the conditions outlined in the staff report. They did also request a waiver for an 80% reduction in impact fees. Those impact fees are for the two new residential units that go up at the top.
All right. The chair is particularly troubled by the fact that he drove right by there this morning to go to drop something off at the post office and never noticed the building was gone, so...
I think they came down last Thursday.
I was tunnel visioned in the morning, I think, a little bit.
It's a small lot.
It is, a small lot, that's true. And I guess my eyes were drawn to the left. I drive by there every day, I didn't know it was coming.
Didn't know, there you go, it's two of us.
So thanks for letting us know that the building is gone, in case we had any objection.
I figured you were going to let me know, but I figured I'd catch you.
It's fine with us. Okay.
So, the real issue still is parking, right?
Excuse me?
The real issue still is parking on into the future.
The whole issue in Lakeport is parking, yeah.
I know.
We're adding as much as we can possibly add to the site.
Right.
With some of the improvements that have been made on Union Avenue, there has been a few more parking spaces, I believe, in this area here. But yes, we will be working for a long time in Lakeport trying to improve parking.
I have a question. Has the applicant made an inquiry about TIF? Is that applicable to a project like this? Tax incentive financing, because we do have a district.
That does fall within the TIF district, I believe. I don't know whether the applicant has sought any tax relief out of that or not.
What's that?
There's a tax incentive financing zone up there.
Well, I've talked about the TIF for another project in Lakeport.
Okay.
But no one seems to know whether there's any money in there yet, and we haven't gotten far enough along in the project.
I don't even know, we have a quorum for you yet, but I believe that I'm on that board and Mr. Stewart is on that board.
That's correct. I've had some general discussions with Mr. Stewart, I had some general discussions with the city manager, but again, we haven't gotten far enough along to...
I sought appointment to that board for this express purpose of assisting redevelopment in this area, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Are there any questions, any other questions for staff regarding this before we go to the public hearing? Sensing none, I'm going to call this public hearing to order at 7:53 PM. Are there any abutters to this project that wish to be heard? Any abutters? Any members of the public that would like to be heard on this application? Any members of the public? All right, sensing none, I guess we will close the public hearing at 7:53.22, if you want to be precise in your minutes. What would the board like to do? Noting, of course, that Mr. Smith has been here four times? For the record. Go ahead, Dave.
Yes, Mr.?
I move to grant conditional approval, application PL 2019-0144 CUP and 0142 SP with the recommending conditions of Planning Department Roman numeral one, one and two, and Roman numeral two, one and two.
Motion by Councilman Bowne.
We need to do the waiver first.
Do we do that first?
Yeah.
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 I'll make the first motion for the waiver and then come back and do the second motion for...
Well, it's hold that motion then. Would someone like to make the motion on the waiver?
Historically, I have been against giving waivers for new residential units.
Oh, I understand that.
We make an exception in this place.
Well, let's let the applicant explain. Why should there be a waiver of the impact fee for these two? Describe these units and what impact they would have on the city infrastructure. Well, I thought the waiver really is because we're rehabbing an existing building. It's not just two residential units. We're restoring the Opera House. I think it's a lot better than coming in here with the new building and asking to tear down the Opera House. A lot of money is going to be spent to restore this building. It's not an easy task. I think we were fortunate as a community to have someone that had enough interest to buy the building and put this kind of money into it with the difficulties that we already have in Lakeport as far as parking is concerned. So I think it's warranted to give this a break. They're doing, it's infill, it's in your regulation, you allow that because of that.
How many dwelling units were in the Clinton Street building that was torn down?
There's no dwellings in it, there's no Clinton Street building.
No.
It's gone.
No, I said how many were in that building?
Oh, it's just one residential unit as far as I know.
So the net difference is one.
That's correct.
Right?
Yep.
Because you're adding two and you've taken one away. Simple math, I can do.
And it is, he is correct, it is an infill of an existing structure.
Okay, so that's the answer there, answer to your concern.
Only in one residential.
I join you usually on these things.
Yeah.
I'm not going to tonight, with all due respect. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
All right, all right then. So we have the motion for the waiver. Any further discussion on the motion? It was seconded, right? No? We need a second on the waiver motion?
We didn't have a motion on the waiver, did we?
I'll make the motion to accept the waiver requested for up to 80% of the impact fee for infilling reuse.
All right, yes, very good. So we have a motion, seconded by Mr. Bowne. Any discussion on the waiver? Any further discussion on the waiver?
That's all right.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? The waiver carries. All right. I'll have David repeat that entire motion, but it was, if I remember correctly, to approve with staff recommendations the cited applications.
And I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Jenna. Now, any further discussion on the motion? Sensing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Good to go, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Rob.
All right, I'm going to take a roller coaster ride now. A little Steppenwolf music would be good. 9.4, PL 2019-0123 CUP for a change of pace, outdoor boat storage at 19 Roller Coaster Road. And this is outdoor storage facility? And this is for project acceptance, then public hearing, right? Right. All right, we'll hear from the applicant. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Can you just tell us who you are?
I wasn't supposed to say anything. I'm just here to represent East Coast Light Craft.
Okay, well, could you say your name again?
My name's Renee.
All right, do you have a last name, Renee?
Loud.
Okay. What would you like to tell us about this project?
It's for outdoor boat storage.
All right. I see we might need some input from staff on this very shortly. Are there any questions for the applicant? There won't be any trick questions.
Okay.
Okay. Can you tell us, like in a general way, why you're, why this is a good place for this?
Um...
Do you perhaps just want to tell them what kind of boats are storing there?
Yeah, so we're just, we basically sell new Malibu, Cobalt, and Axis boats. Charlie already has a business there and already has outdoor boat storage. We're just looking to add more boats to the property.
That's what we're looking for.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You did it. You did it. I couldn't, like, I'm even allowed to ask leading questions and I couldn't get it out. All right, thank you. Are there any questions now based upon this? Okay, what does staff have to say about 19 Roller Coaster Road?
So they're not looking to do any changes to the land whatsoever, they are going to add some vegetative buffer in next to the roads for us. They moved their sign that was off-site, off the property a little bit, onto the property, so it's more in compliance. And they have provided sufficient parking for their additional boat storage that they're just going to be storing on the grassed area on the side of the lot there. From my understanding, is more to facilitate boat sales of perhaps people seeing the types of boats.
Potentially, but I think it was just to store them, to...
Winter storage?
I believe so.
Shrink wrapped, outdoor, right?
I believe so.
So there's kind of the dual use of leaving them there during the winter and then having them somewhat on display as well.
Do they make tie-dye shrink wrap?
I'm sure they could. They could spray paint it. I'm pretty crafty.
Can we look into that?
It would be a distraction for drivers.
I'm a distraction for drivers. All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? All right, well, sensing none, we need a motion for acceptance and then go to public hearing.
I move that we accept the application's complete.
Motion to accept the application, is there...
I'll second.
Second, seconded by Ms. Jenna. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now we're ready for public hearing at... All right, that motion carries. Now we're ready for public hearing at 8:01. Are there any butters to this 19 Roller Coaster Road property that would like to be heard? You can sit down, ma'am, if you want. That's good. Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:01.40. What is the pleasure of the board? I move that we go ahead and approve PL 2019-0123CUP for the outdoor boat storage, the additional storage area there for 19 Roller Coaster Road with staff recommendations. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Jenna. Motion by Mr. Bellaville. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Michael.
The overhead picture, it's showing a driveway going out onto Route 3.
It's already there, yeah. We're not doing anything to the driveway.
Probably be better to access that lot off of Roller Coaster Road for safety matters.
That's how we are accessing it. Not off Route 3, it's off Roller Coaster Road.
But there is a driveway, there's a curb cut on Route 3?
Right, they're not making any changes to the road. Everything, there's no changes, physical changes to the lot. That's just a existing driveway that's been there probably for a long time.
And you're saying that you don't use the Route 3 one, you use Roller Coaster Road?
Yes.
Does that work, or do we want to work that into the motion?
Well, it's, you know, entering it...
It's not a problem.
From the north is okay, but entering it from the south or exiting it is a problem. And so that driveway should be considered possibly to be blocked off.
Well, that's a DOT thing, for one thing. That's one of their, they have to approve the, any alterations to the curb cut. But I see your point. Anybody that knows the property, though, would know that if you're northbound and you want to go into that property, you should take the left at the light and then take a sharp right. Right?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? You're all done. Thank you so much. You were awesome.
You were awesome.
I see a future in land use board representation. All right. Well, that was fun. Nine point five, PL 2019-0143SU. Sixty-two and sixty-four Prescott Avenue, it's a boundary line adjustment between two lots. Aren't they all between two lots? Sometimes it's three lots or so. That's right, all right, never mind. Acceptance and public hearing. Hello, step on up to the applicant. Let us know who you are.
Good evening. I'm Lori Damaris, property owner at sixty-four Prescott. And I'm here just to get an approval on a boundary line adjustment we've been working on for the past few years. Just between the neighbor at sixty-two Prescott and sixty-four, we've come to an agreement. They're not here.
Okay.
We have paperwork signed. They've agreed to let us come in here and represent...
Sure.
Both parties. They've agreed to the property line adjustment. It's all written out.
So you should be happy that it's about to end?
It's...
Okay.
It's been a long process.
I bet. Well...
Yeah, and it is about to end. I mean, it started, it started a little difficult, but it's ending with no hard feelings. Come to a mutual agreement. We're just making a little adjustment on both ends. We purchased the property and found out afterwards that it wasn't, the property line wasn't on the fence line that we thought it was. And we've just come to agreement. We've given a little on one end, he's given a little on the other end. And we're just looking to...
They say fences make good neighbors.
If it's in the right spot.
Well, but, you know, there's always adjustments that can be made. And thank you, Mr. Damaris. Are there any questions for the applicant? There are no questions for you at this time. We're going to ask the staff to make a recommendation to us.
So this started as a boundary line. She stated there was an issue with agreement on where it was. They came to an agreement and we had to go to the zoning board to ask for, to kind of deviate from where because of how close the buildings were to all of those property lines. So they went to the zoning board and they got their variances. And now they're here before the planning board. They've met all of our requirements. So they've definitely...
You don't think we should continue this for another...
They've definitely jumped through a lot of hoops to make this a reality, so.
See, she's smiling. I just, I make jokes like that sometimes and I look up and they're grief-stricken. Thank you. I shouldn't be making jokes. All right, any questions for staff? Sensing none, we're going to open the public hearing, I guess. Well, actually, we do a motion on acceptance first.
Right.
Would anyone care to make that necessary prerequisite?
I move that we accept the application as complete.
There is a motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Jenna. I see a pattern. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? All right, the application has been lawfully accepted and I will now open the public hearing at 8:07. Are there any butters that would like to be heard? Any butters to this property located on Prescott Ave? Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard? What? Sensing none, I'll close the public hearing at, wait for it, 8:08. And what is the pleasure of the board?
A motion to accept application PL 2019-0143SU.
You mean approve?
Approve.
All right.
Sixty-two and sixty-four Prescott Ave, the proposal to adjust the boundary lines between the two lots, subject to staff recommendations.
Staff recommendation, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And it's been seconded by Mr. Bellaville. Any discussion on this motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed?
Go forth.
Thank you.
Live long and prosper.
Thank you so much.
Live long, that's right.
Right, live long and prosper.
Especially you guys, I just want to thank you guys again. You've been so helpful. Every time we come downstairs...
Let the record show that they were praising the planning department. That's probably a good thing to put in the record. All right, we are at PL 2020. Oh my God, we've crossed over. What happened to 0001? All right, 0002SP, 1184 Weirs Avenue, Weirs Boulevard. It's a proposal to add paved parking spaces, screened dumpster, and a porta potty. Is this one of those two-story porta potties, Steve?
It's got an elevator.
It's got an elevator in the, is it handicap?
Yes, it does. I have an elevator.
Good job, there's...
It's getting late.
Yeah. They say this will all be electronic someday, Steve.
No, it isn't. So what do you think? Phone it now.
It is, it is where I work now, thank God.
But not for me. I'm okay with the paper copies.
No, I like the paper too, better than these iPad things.
It's hard time reading that computer and those little plans. For the record, Steve Smith, Steve Smith Associates, I'm here representing Dennis Moore. This is One of Pesaki Landing, used to be Handy Landing.
Yep.
A number of years ago. I have the existing conditions plan on the left and on your right is the proposed improvements plan. I have it as 184 to 1188 Weirs Boulevard. That's what's always been on my plans, but I think that the address may have to change because of the number of units that are there. It probably should have been changed before, but that's something we can work out on 9/11 if we have to on those addresses. But this property is in the CR's zone. It's a little under an acre of land area. There are eight existing residential units and thirteen existing boat slips. We got a site plan approved for this project for a site plan and condominium conversion back in 2009. And at that time, we were proposing an additional three units right here. And we removed a five-unit building, I believe it was down here. So we were going to have eight units here and three more units in this area here. That was all approved as a condominium. We came in and got an extension once, I think, maybe twice, and then it went by the wayside and then the permit was basically pulled because the three units weren't built. Basically, the pull, in my opinion, was for the three units because the eight units were already done. So we're here with an amended site plan, condominium plan to retain the eight units that are there, and those eight residential units are in this building here, which used to be the Handy Landing building, part of it anyways. It's in here.
Yep.
These parking spaces exist. All this parking exists here is paved. And this parking that's down here now on this plan goes all the way down to the scrub line here is all gravel parking. And we simply are proposing to take a portion of that that's gravel and make it paved parking, re-stripe the parking in this area here. Redo the walkway in this area, re-stripe the parking, put in a rain garden for stormwater treatment. Put in a dumpster and the porta potty. The porta potty has been used in the summers because of the bouldocks. They've just really been rented over the summers. With the, formalizing the condominium site plan, the eight units will all have a boat slip. And that gives us five remaining boat slips to be condominium boat slips. And someone that buys gets a parking space with a limited common area to a boat slip. That's how they do it. Or they do it what they call a mailbox and they get a parking space. But the idea here is to simply take a portion of what was gravel parking and pave it, stripe it, add some green space, actually, provide some stormwater treatment. We didn't have a dumpster out there before because the independent units would put their trash out on trash day.
Right.
But because we're going to have condominium boat slips and independent units, the condominium boat slips might not be there on trash day. The city doesn't want to put in their trash out, so they've asked for a dumpster. So that's why we now are proposing a screened dumpster in this area here and the porta potty, of course, so that someone who has a boat slip and doesn't have a unit has a place to go to the bathroom. So the only change really in the plan is paving gravel, parking, to have it paved parking, increasing the green space overall, we are doing. And formalizing, again, the actual condominium side of the site plan approval.
Okay.
So to recap...
What's the porta potty going to sit on? Is the porta potty on a pad?
No, they don't put porta potties on pads. They're on their own self-contained unit. The dumpster has to go on a pad, but the porta potties don't go on pads.
Okay. All right, any questions for the applicant? All right, sensing none. How about the staff recommendations?
So we did meet with Mr. Smith on this project earlier. And we discussed that we wanted, we saw a need for the dumpster and for the porta potty in there in that if we're, they're going to condominiumize those boat slips, that people coming on and off those boats are going to have trash or they're going to have to use a facility. And since there's no actual physical space for them in any of those units or right for them to use them, that something needed to be provided. And that was the solution that we, that we came to. And they have agreed to all of that and they beat all the requirements, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for staff? Excuse me. All right, sensing none. Do we need acceptance on this one as well?
Yes.
All right, so how does the board feel about accepting this application? Is it in order and ready for acceptance?
It is in order, ready for acceptance.
Okay.
I move that we go ahead and accept the application for PL 2020-0002SP for 1184 Weirs Boulevard.
A motion to accept the application by Mr. Bellaville. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Was that from you, David? All right, by Councilman Brown's. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so at 8:17, we're going to open a public hearing. Are there any butters here that would like to be heard? Any butters? This was just the application acceptance. Any butters? Any members of the public?
Let me just say one thing. That 1188 is the five-unit building that I tore down. So he's saying it's referred to as 1184 and 1188? I don't know how you delete 1188, but it's not there. The building's not there. So the whole property can be called 1184 from this point forward.
Well, we don't change the 911 designations for anything, so. We're not in charge of doing that.
If you get called to 1188, it'd be for a grass fire.
I think we would check the public works. They issue them, would ask them to look at it
Yep.
and make the appropriate decision based on the 9/11 standards.
And if there was a fire on 1184 and they got toned out to 1188, they might find it. All right. Anything else? All right, where are we at? Motion?
Moving.
Motion in favor? Anybody?
With conditions.
Okay, we'll make the motion to accept, approve PL 2020-0002SP. The parking space with the dumpster and porta potty.
All right, is there a second to that?
With the staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations.
Was that a second?
I'll second that.
I was going to say a second by Mr. Bellaville. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed?
Project.
It's approved.
Thank you, Ms. Jenna.
Have a good night. All right, we are moving right along now, breakneck speed. We have before us for application acceptance only tonight. PL 2020-0003SP, 1330 Union Avenue, it's a proposal to construct thirty-two condominium units, lakefront condominium units associated garages and outdoor parking. There is a waiver going to be requested for, wait for it, sidewalks.
Which I believe the board should motion whether they want to approve the waiver for the sidewalks before they make the motion to accept it as complete.
Why wouldn't it be complete even with the waiver not granted?
Because if it's not complete, then they'd have to go back and engineer in the sidewalks.
All right. So regarding that, there is a sidewalk across the street.
Correct.
Where's the nearest sidewalk in either direction on the west side of Union Avenue?
So from that property, they cannot make, sufficiently make the turn past the cemetery with sidewalks as it would be in the road. And then the closest sidewalk is 550 feet in the opposite direction going towards the Marina...
Watermark.
Watermark.
Watermark has a sidewalk.
Watermark was...
We made Watermark put in a sidewalk. We made Dunkin' Donuts put in a sidewalk. We made the new retail mini-space put in a sidewalk with respect to this. We made them all put in sidewalks. So the only thing that's missing sidewalks is those establishments that were there before we started saying
This is the only opportunity we're going to have to get a sidewalk on that side of Union Avenue.
Correct. Though, this request was told, this Department of Public Works asked them to put in this waiver request for the sidewalk.
Well, I want to hear that from the Department of Public Works and I want to have a conversation with them.
So with that, I did provide a copy of... So with that, I did provide a copy of Public Works' request for them, for the waiver of the sidewalks. Where Krista goes over why it is beneficial for them to request the waiver for the sidewalk.
Where is that? I didn't see that.
There was a paper copy on the table with your agenda. It was also, it was right behind the letter from Wes that we referred to in the first thing tonight.
Yes.
Yep, I see it.
I've got, attached to Wes's memorandum, I've got.
No, it's a single sheet behind.
This right here, I think? Creates problems for plowing, David, in winter maintenance. Are we in discussion now or? Well, I think we're taking a moment to let everyone catch up on reading that memo. I do that in the dull parts. Okay. So somebody make a motion and then we can have a discussion on it? I, well, we'll make a motion that we disapprove the waiver for sidewalks. Reason being. Okay. You want to put thirty-two units there. Some of them are two-bedroom. I think there's a couple three-bedrooms they're proposing. You could have a hundred people there and there's not a sidewalk for them to walk out. There's restaurants down the street, restaurants across the street. They're gonna be walking around.
Yep.
If right next door, John's Corvette has like an open area, even though it's not probably an official sidewalk, there's a paved area there along the road. It's kind of crooked, if you recall. I don't know if you've been walking by there. You know, then across. Pogus Marina property.
I think there's a sidewalk on the bridge over Black Brook.
There is.
Yep.
On both sides.
On both sides and it goes up to the entrance to the.
Harbor.
I just think to add thirty, if you want to put thirty-two units in and not have a sidewalk, that's ludicrous. Well, and the other consideration is, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but in the evening hours or especially in the winter when it gets dark early. So a lot of people in black uniforms crossing right in front of the restaurant there. And there's no sidewalk for them on that side if they were to park on that side.
And I'm not asking.
We have a motion, but we need a second. All right, is this second by Ms. Jenna? Now we can discuss. The motion, the motion is to deny the sidewalk waiver.
And I support that. I'm not asking that they put a sidewalk north of the property, up by the graveyard, as you call it, the mausoleum or whatever. Because that's already, the entrance has already got its own little paved entrance from the Barton's Motel property. But you've got that long stretch there and you gotta put in a sidewalk. We did it all along the strip there. You can walk, if they put a sidewalk in there, you can walk in an area designated for the sidewalk, right in front of the Corvette place, right in front of the boat.
Veteran heavy.
You can walk right in front of that. And there's even a little curb cut on the, on the property side for everything. So I don't know what this is about plowing, but they plow islands all the time. And I'm, I'm really, you gotta put in a sidewalk.
Well, the argument that it's discontinuous and therefore it makes it difficult to plow. By that standard, they shouldn't plow my street.
Well.
You know, I got a sidewalk, but it's, there's no sidewalk at the other end, so. Anyway, so we have a motion and a second. The motion is to deny the sidewalk waiver. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Is that what the applicant, do you want to still do application acceptance, subject to?
Do we want to do application acceptance with the condition that they ask sufficient time to engineer their plans to add in the sidewalks?
But does that save them any time? Because we could still schedule a public hearing and acceptance at the same time next month, right?
We can do that, absolutely.
I'd rather do that so that the staff can make the recommendation about the sidewalk as well. And then if Public Works wants to send somebody and explain to us why we made a mistake, we'll talk about it.
So you want to continue the.
Continue the acceptance. That is the correct.
Thanks, Dana.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Continue the acceptance and then schedule the public hearing for the same.
Yes.
Same meeting, okay.
Continue the acceptance and schedule a public hearing for the next hearing on March third.
All right, moved by Councilman the Browns, seconded by.
Sure, I'll second it.
Sure. Seconded, all right, Mr. Bellovo. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Done. Moving right along. Thank you. All right, we are at. Where are we? Planning Board member to the Historic District.
Ah, yes, the Historic Distinct Commission. Distinct, yes.
Oh, that spell checked.
It's very distinctive.
Wouldn't catch distinct because that's a word.
Only one person noticed, two people noticed when I put on the email for this agenda.
Really? Did they write a letter to the editor? All right, so we have, could we hear from staff about this thing? Do we have a nominee?
We do not have nominee. You would have to.
Select it?
Select them, though it might be in the board's interest if we perhaps continue this one. I think that there are several applicants that have put in for the planning board.
Ah, let the new guy get this one.
And perhaps it might be very beneficial to the board to.
Well, let's do this. Is there anybody here that would like to be on the Historic Distinct Committee? I mean, Ed Bones. Ed wants to be on it? No, I don't do that. I've been on committees where if you miss one meeting, you suddenly get appointed to the subcommittee. No, not tonight. All right. So we want to table that?
I, I feel like we should table that. That I think provides us an opportunity to speak with Dean. I think you spoke to six or so applicants about planning, joining the planning board. So we might have some new members coming in and.
All right.
Might have a.
Do you need a motion to table? Or no, I didn't think. Just continue it. This is internal stuff, right, okay. All right, well, then Rob, I guess we're, all eyes are on you for the staff, planning department report.
So as discussed earlier, we're looking to do the special exception for short-term rentals. We also are looking to correct the name for the Minor Site Plan Committee. With all those changes, as I think we discussed a few months ago, we are looking to rewrite the site plan and subdivision regulations. We are very close to having a brand-new document to present to you, hopefully within the next month or so. We're ironing out some street acceptance and street standard issues with Public Works right now and how that intertwines with, you know, their regulations. And also to update how we manage cul-de-sacs or hammerheads or other types of dead end.
Speaking of which, how are things up on Cottonwood Ave?
I believe that the city attorney is going to be very busy.
Ah, in a litigious manner?
I believe so.
Ah, well, that takes us out of the loop then, doesn't it? Okay.
So I'm sure.
Sorry to hear that, actually. That's a neighborhood up there and it.
It's a meeting I'm glad I missed.
They're probably glad too. All right, so.
So I'm hoping to have, where Dean and I are hoping to have a new site plan, but we have kind of done, briefly outlined some of the major changes. We did have a site plan and a subdivision regulation. Some of them differed and were similar in some parts and referenced back to each other, but were both updated at different times. So what we kind of collaborated with was combining them into one document as other municipalities have done to help make everything easier for applicants to go through. And a standard way of doing business for everything.
Wow.
So it has been quite a feat of rewriting. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we can present you with a reform document.
I always, just to let you know, I was at a meeting, my new job down in Concord. There were some people that do development and environmental remediations and things like that. And I, they didn't know me from Adam and they were talking about how they enjoyed working with the planning department in Laconia. And that they thought that the planning board was fair. And I chuckled and I resisted the urge to identify myself because I want further information if possible, but.
You probably should have uttered the words, nothing could be further from the truth.
No, I would, I would concur. I think we have a friendly, helpful, as we heard from an applicant tonight, planning department. People that come to that counter are often totally confused and angry and they leave satisfied and more times than not. Which is a good thing.
I think we're very fortunate as a department. We have some great staff.
Right.
Who help a lot of people out, so.
I, I hope you include yourself in that, Robert. All right, liaisons, liaison, oh, Lake Region Planning Commission. Well, let's see. Missed the December meeting because of weather. I think I missed the January meeting out of forgetfulness. So I have nothing to report, although there is a Lake Region Planning Commission and they do meet quarterly. Are there any other Laconia members?
I am also a member, though I was unable to make the last meeting as well, so.
So we should caucus perhaps.
We should even discuss.
Can we use that software from Iowa?
Sure.
You know, you just have to say nothing to report rather than, you know.
I'm sorry, but it's late in the night and I try to be witty on the record. Conservation, nobody's conserved their place in line here. What does the council have to say?
The council has to say that I've spoken with Dean. And I want to make an effort to jumpstart the master plan steering committee again. And I want to get, in my sights, is getting the master plan done this year.
Okay.
And I think that's doable.
All right, well, we may have the, one of the members, past members of that committee serving on this board shortly. I think Gary Dion's thinking of coming back to the planning board.
You know, I, I think we should reach out to everybody, Ed included, everybody that was on that committee.
Ed was an excellent member of that committee.
Anybody else who wants to be part of that committee, get this master plan done and finalized. We've made a lot of progress. We've got a lot of the chapters that have been written that may need. So we've got a lot, we've got some work to do, but it's not daunting. We can do it.
There is a lot, and Dean's already got a list of more things he'd like to work on with it, so.
Go ahead.
So hopefully we can.
I have one, one item that was on the agenda, but that is the state school property. As, I don't know if you know, but there's a bill, there's a new bill that creates a new commission with some funding to actually conduct the primary stages. And the infrastructure improvements and things of that sort. I like what I've heard so far about those improvements. There's an acknowledgement that the sewer in there has got to be replaced. It's part of the Winnipeg Saki River Basin project. It's a catchment area. And it's also, what do they call it, an artery or whatever, that cuts, I think, all the way down the old path of Meredith Center Road, so.
I don't know whether it's come out of the House of Representatives or.
I don't know yet.
Come out of the Senate.
I'll try, I'll let.
There's been a preliminary approval of not the whole seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but five hundred thousand dollars and the concept of, you know.
The commission.
The commission.
Right.
So, and that's all, that's all on track. That's all very optimistic. There's gonna be money there. There may be more money in this legislative session in the next two years that they can tap into, so.
There's gonna be some, some federal dollars for the brownfield.
There'll be some matches up there.
Yep.
That's a little more tricky and I'm not sure about that, but I'm sure people are exploring that option.
Yep, so that's all good. It's, the, the way it was described to me is that they modeled this on the, over, on the P's redevelopment commission. So or the authority that they have down there.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other business?
Yes, move to adjourn.
Other than adjournment? There is nothing. So we have a motion to adjourn pending. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Let's out of here. Thank you. We are off the record at whatever it is, eight thirty-six. That wasn't bad.
Considering the number of items that were on this agenda, getting out of here at eight.